Meeting to order is the meeting of the Hampton Board of Select for the Board of Health Townhouse Auditorium, June 28, 2021, 6:00 p.m. The meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely and being recorded. Please stand before the podium. But we invite the United States of America into the room, which stands as one nation under God, in this world, liberty, justice, law. Just make a brief comment, I'd like to, on behalf of the board, extend our condolences to the Shea family. Mr. John Shea passed away, an outstanding member of the community, did much for charities like the Lions Club and YMC, the Boy Scouts.
Down with the stalwart member, including his last service in the COA Board, always there for the brown bag of distribution, et cetera, as Don said, a good member of the community, so in the condolences to him.
Minutes, what's made 24th?
Pretty sure we're doing these last week, 24th?
The 24th?
Yeah.
We mailed them out, we emailed them out the week before.
We mailed the 24th.
What I mean, you know, number two step.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Last week you emailed the 24th.
Yeah.
And then this week it was emailed the 24th.
Okay, well, I'm gonna reconsider, did you wanna look at them again or are you still?
That double space would make it look longer.
Or it counts as the same.
All right.
Oh dear, okay.
See, police policies. We have bias free professional policing and public record.
I don't see him.
He talked about.
It's easier when he goes to a gallery, it's easier to see.
We, I guess the question I have is, are these? I think we did a lot of policies last year, and are these in response now to the new reform, reform law?
He did have a cover letter, he had a cover note beneath it, at least David.
He did, yes, yeah. Police reform has brought it up.
All attached probably have a current management credit, it's the best practice given from that general law. Thank you, Senator, the policy is going to affect very day of that policy.
One thing I think, Don, you were calling last time, of Jeff, was could we get, whether it was an Excel list or something like that, of the policies, the data were adopted, date last compliance, so trying to get a sense, I mean, he must have that in the beginning of the fall. We gave him copy, give him a full copy, send them to office.
Yes, sir.
Pass that off to Scott.
All of the top, all of the police policies that have been adopted are in the OneDrive. Under police, sub over police, police policy, all the ones we adopted.
Yeah, looking for a video, a table of contents with date adopted, so which we didn't have before.
Second motion.
And just for the record, these policies include public record policy, those records access officer, request for law for authorization of public records, response to public records, suspension, respond requests, exemptions, charge of fees. Want to take the charge for
visual points.
Any other?
What, what question is, are they obligated to have these policies out from the open, obviously for people to see? But only by going to the police station can you be able to have a request to see these, or, or obviously public documents?
Public documents.
People who are attending our meeting right now don't know what kind of data are, but they'd be able to view them and anything. I'm not much of a fan of public record requests, I think you get a lot of the same thing by just walking in, taking a look at that. Not submitting.
I will check with the chief to see if they have them available and visible.
Well, even on their website.
No other towns have them on their website?
They don't.
They do.
They do, so it's the same thing, since they have a pretty good website, they're on, they have them.
They also post them. We post them on our website, the town website.
We can link to theirs, the problem with having them on both is keeping them up to date. I think a link to the ones on their website, even these dot com, would serve the purpose. That way you don't have to keep one section up there.
Motion made.
Yes.
One favor? What are the police records courts?
You have in your packet, the appointments of two records clerks. Both former dispatchers. It's in the scan, it's in the in the package scan.
With the agenda, both with the agenda in this year.
And well, I'll, I'll just bring it up.
Is it in the email box?
It's on the OneDrive, and it was in the packet.
Right, so not confirmed.
I'm gonna put it here. The packet scan was just the policies and procedures.
On the OneDrive, where specifically?
Oh, did it follow the policies, which I printed out, so maybe at the end of that? I think it may be.
Oh, police records clerk?
Yeah.
Definition?
Yes, it does, it follows the policies.
This looks like a job description.
It's a job, yeah.
Let's see. Mr. Ken.
We have the two candidates, names I can, you know them there?
Yeah.
Peter Rocky? Brad Angela.
Really appointing the fire or the chief through there?
Are we the appointing authority, or is the chief?
I would say they're internal hires, so.
I have a sense that they're internal.
Those are the two people who are supposed to be in the life first.
Yes.
And the chief, well, we're drunk chief.
All right. Just to report on this, everything is moving smooth, going smooth, I think Mr. Gentile's on, everything is going smoothly with dispatch so far.
Mr. Gentile, are you on mute?
Yep, there we go, I just had a quick problem with my laptop, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Everything going smoothly?
Everything's going very smoothly, in fact, I have a meeting with the chief of police tomorrow at 3:00, and one more final meeting with the chief of the fire department at 4:30, and we've been, as you know, we've been taking calls for service and doing everything 100% since June 2nd. We wanted to make sure that everything was in place, and we had all of our issues worked out, which have been. And July 1st is the 100% switch over date, where we have we'll have no dispatchers at the Hampton Police Department, and it'll be 100% Wilbraham.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks Anthony.
Thank you. So we got the clerk at Crosswalk in someone's role.
No news on that. Haven't sought any news, because Pam and I have spent most of the last few days on the next item. Which I'll, which is committee appointments, yes.
If I could jump in, at the housing authority meeting last week, it was expressed, they're very concerned about that getting in there. They're kind of, they're obviously understanding that we need to make it right, make it correct. But I think they, they echo the sentiment of the board, that the notification system down the road is more important than the surface of the area crossing.
Right.
Okay, so they want to make that known.
Some communities are establishing, are putting in what amounts to rumble strips prior to their crosswalks, as an additional warning. I went over a few of them recently, and I wondered, well, I wonder if we should look at that too, as a way of enhancing the safety at our crosswalk. They aren't really, what it is, is those plastic white strips. So it's not what you associate with a rumble strip, it's something lesser than that. But it does, does give you a little bit of warning that something's approaching, and you should be careful. Pam and I have spent most of our week, as I said, on the next item. And you have the comprehensive list, which has addresses. Then you have what I was suggesting, we might want to print and make available to the public. Obviously, our printer wouldn't do the complex stapling there, but we could figure out a way to provide that to people as a way of encouraging volunteers.
If you need a few, our, our system at work does that stapling.
So we got it from?
Yeah, let me just send me the file, return 100 for stock.
Thought I'd give that to you tonight, if you see of any changes that are needed. Already, there are a few, John is actually a member of the capital improvement committee. I've added him, and we do have a couple of more people for the fire, the fire department expansion.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Everybody should.
But I can tell you that in both instances with police and fire, you have an extensive list of people which have been reviewed by both the police and fire chiefs, so those are accurate.
Yeah, community preservation, the community preservation, you've got the appointment things, there are four at large members.
I have you and Mara.
Doug and Cynthia, the other two.
Who?
Doug and Cynthia, the other two.
There are two, I thought they were ex officio.
No, this is the community preservation.
Right, but I thought Doug was an ex officio member from advisory?
No, there, there are four at large members, two appointed by selectmen, two by the moderator.
Okay, right.
So just list the four of us as at large. Political council, is that current Pam, is that?
Yeah, that's.
As current as it is, basically?
Yeah, as current as it is, yeah.
Did they get much money this year? Stake your bet.
We hadn't spent everything from prior year, so, so, yeah. I, I forget what the number was, John.
Where'd you get it, between six and nine thousand a year roughly?
Usually about that.
Our intent is to bring in, or reappointment next week, all those listed as 2021 term expiring. Should police officers have a term expiring?
It's an annual.
It's an annual, one year.
There's a lot of signing one night.
Yeah.
Oh, good job, people.
I have this little pamphlet.
I don't think you should tell the 21s, just go ahead.
Well, we did, we did a lot of work on that.
Maybe the pamphlet will be good, we can leave that like the clerk's office or whatever.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Or at the doorway.
Yeah.
Information fires.
Very nice.
Well, if you'll look it over more carefully when you get a chance, let me know of any other corrections before we go out to print more.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Wasn't the Graves officer recently appointed or something?
Yes, I was thinking that today, because I saw Don, add that to the list.
What's that?
The Graves officer, Don Talbot.
It's added, it's there.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, look down at the, under veterans.
He's been serving bacon.
Oh, must have been cut off.
On the white sheet, maybe somebody.
No, Don's on this.
He's on that. It must have been cut off when I set up, set up the print, yeah, it was cut off.
He's on this.
But we have him on the list.
Yeah.
And Mr. Comerford, as you know, has resigned.
Yeah.
And they're recruiting a new VSO. And Munson has withdrawn from the district.
Hey? She won? Is one, she won, Munson lady won?
Yes. There's a general consensus among members who are not part of Munson, that it's going to be very expensive, and it's likely that with Mr. Comerford being replaced, Munson will be more, a little more flexible, and maybe willing to come back, so.
I did get some here from one selected in Wilbraham, and wanted to know if we were interested in maybe partnering with them.
Partnering with them for?
Veteran officer.
Well, I think they've been approached, haven't they, Ron, been approached by Rick to come into the fold?
So, anyway, that's
where we are on this.
And our intention is to update this as we make changes, so we'll keep it current, rather than doing it, you know, once a year or so.
Updated vehicle replacements.
The vehicle replacement schedule is updated for police vehicles. The chief sent me the information on mileage, repair costs, and changes. It's been updated for the public works department, Mark has sent me the same. Vehicles, repair costs, and mileage, I'm waiting on the fire chief. Thought I'd have it by this time, but gonna have to get after him tomorrow to get that done, and I'll give it to you next week. And actually, we're having the capital planning tomorrow.
Six.
Six, yes, yes.
Six, the two goes out of the books, there's Monday after, it goes out of the books. It was one or the other.
That was Monday after.
That was the Monday after, we were going to close the books, but there was any action being popping, which one was it, we're closing the books on the Tuesday meeting, or the Monday after?
Well, he said that he's going to close the books for the last warrant, for, it would be the the 12th. And so, we have a problem, obviously, we're meeting on the 6th, but we're not meeting on the 12th.
Is it the 6th we're meeting, or we're meeting on the 12th? I thought we.
We're not, we decided to meet on the 6th. I, I just got the message from him today. We only have three accounts that are overdrawn, it's a pretty simple thing, I'm going to ask him why not bring those accounts in for the 6th. Since, you know, otherwise, we don't have any big problems, they're small amounts, and I don't think we're going to see more overdrawn accounts in the last warrant.
Right, you mean coordinate that with advisory as well?
Coordinate with advisory, yeah. Yeah, actually, if we waited till the 12th, it doesn't give the advisory many days for them to have their meeting as well, so. Maybe a joint meeting. Maybe a special, I don't see why we can't do this on the 6th, frankly.
Okay, so stick with that for now. Executive session is next, but they're not here, don't be here for us, so the IMA shared health services.
IMA shared health service, you have version seven. We did meet last week. The version seven that is on the OneDrive there is outlined in red, any of the changes made. We went through it. If you want additional time, it is not essential that you do it tonight. The other communities have scheduled their selectment in July. What is essential is that we get on with the hiring. And Laurie gave her, Laura Cool gave her official notice last week, and she is leaving on the 30th of July, rather than what we thought was about the second week in August. So we did discuss, you know, are we on track to get someone? And we're hopeful that we can, we can get that done in the month of July. Really? I still don't like the assets part being shared. 6.13. Yeah, assets, public health assets will be shared, and may be used by member communities. Well, the operation is going to be directed out of the office of the health agent in the town of Long Meadow. I'm not sure if there, there are any hard assets that will be part of this. Other than the high reason. Paper assets?
As we push more people through the cloud, because it's hard, we can all have access to whatever's up there. And again, a lot of individual will have our separate plans, they'll have their separate plans.
And there is assurance that any fees collected in the town of Hampton will go into offers of the town of Hampton.
Next time, another draft coming, or?
No, that's it. So this is the final one? I thought I'd give you the red line copy, so you could see the changes. But we, we'll put it on for the next time, and we'll give you a clean copy this summer.
I'll make a motion to endorse a clean copy, let's just, let's just make a motion to endorse the IMA as presented with a clean copy.
I will second the motion.
One favor? Insurance policy endorsement?
Yeah, I just wanted you to know that I spoke with Barry Insurance, who they handle our property and liability, and to give you an idea of what the costs will be for the coming year. You can see that what we, what we pay this year compared to, or what we're going to pay, sorry, in '22 versus what we have paid in '21, we're up from 68 to 75. Workers' comp has gone up about a thousand dollars.
I don't have any of that here.
You don't have, you don't have this on the back, the front back side?
She, she, the one from 68, she said 275. We just don't know what it increased from.
That's what, that's the, that's what I'm showing you. The renewal, and then I've got 68.5 next to it.
All we have is this.
I don't even have that.
Oh, no, that's, I'm sorry, that's different, that is what we're paying, I want you to understand that we, we have got the radio communications covered, that was one of the things. The next was the costs for property and liability, and I don't know, I think I put that as a side note at the bottom of your
You're talking about this now?
Agenda, maybe, yes.
You just handed these out just now, didn't you?
Yes, I did. It was just a single sheet, but it's double sided. Not there. Got it?
Only have the one, did you have a handout for the one?
Yes. Just I spoke with the ref from, got it? Okay, okay, so, our budget compared to what we have spent this year, and you can see in the flip side that we are overdrawn. And we budgeted for 120. And we're overdrawn this year at 121.
They stay why they went up so much?
Well, a lot of, a lot of nationwide changes with everything that's happened environmentally, really, a lot of claims that have come as a result of changes in everything across the country, that's part of it. Part of it is workman's comp or workers' comp, that changes depending on who we have employed, what they make, that always varies. And let's see, I don't think he part of it is also past claims that we've had, now they haven't been huge, our last, you know, last year we were pretty good, but the year before, and it's all running track, they
So the experience claims are also affected from starts. Do you have a sense then, and I don't know, Don, if you're planning on, hate to say it, starting a folder for the fall already? But we have, we have, we have the boilerplate ones already, so let's do. So do we have a sense that there's going to be a need for a transfer or appropriation into either front free cash or reinsurance account?
All right, yeah. So put that on the list, and
So we paid 120 last year, what do you think it's going to be this year?
Well, we budgeted 120.
It was 121.
Yeah, and we've paid out 121.
Okay.
So we're in the hole, and then this year, we are budgeted at 120, 200. And obviously, we're going to be underwater with that.
Are we going to get any reductions? I mean, obviously, we're, whatever's at the police station for equipment that we're not going to be using, this that council, even though we lease them, do we cover them under insurance?
Well.
Is there any reduction there?
I mean, maybe if we're not using them, but we still own them.
No.
We don't, oh, right, so they're gone.
I made the insurance form, so.
And the workers' comp probably would go down too, a little bit.
Yes, yes.
Now, just from a business standpoint, if we get the hit for unemployment like businesses did, Bob, you're aware of that when you saw it?
I did.
We were hit, but.
I don't think, uh, so far, we got a warning that it's likely to, to increase. And that would not be, I guess it'll be for us, but it was a warning basically to those who, uh, pay in regularly as opposed to.
Well, I know this is in East Long Meadow, you may have seen the same report, that there went up tenfold. Not down the road, they got billed right away. They were paying seventeen hundred, the bill came in seventeen thousand.
Right, right. Well, we're, we're in a pay-go.
Yeah.
We're, we're on a pay-go, pay-as-you-go system.
And these were businesses that didn't have unemployment, they're just making up a shortfall for everybody else that was claiming it. And I know there's a big, and I actually talked to Lester about this, that they want the governor to use some of the CARES money, offset the deficit of one of them, which he should.
I'm only aware of the warning that, that, uh, the unemployment, uh, agency sent saying, expect higher costs. We have not, I have not, and I watch the site regularly. I have not seen a, an increase at this point.
Maybe a need then for another article. You know, please go with that possible.
Yeah.
Um, uh, in addition though, at the bottom of that, we can have building appraisals done. I got a response from Megan Rogers, the firehouse. Um, and she questioned the values for the firehouse, uh, as requested by, by the chief. And we could get something done between three to five thousand dollars to have them come in and do full appraisal of our buildings. And I thought you might want to consider that, given we're looking into values of everything.
Is that building appraisals or asset appraisals too?
Well, I don't know that they'll do assets, but I will check on that. Um, that is a little different. Yeah, I'll ask on that.
All right, anything else there? We got, uh, small bridge inspection report.
Just really wanted to notify you that that came through and, uh, it can be, uh, taken care of through, uh, chapter ninety money. And I don't know if that was on any list that you had, Bob. This, did you see?
The only list, the only, uh, small bridge that we're looking to get funded is the one on East Main Street.
And that wasn't from chapter nine, that was tip money, I thought.
No, that's not, that's not under chapter nine, I mean, that's under the small bridge program.
Right.
And we have, and legislature has not actually signed off on the chapter ninety one yet either.
Right.
And Dr. Joel at Eric's office, he's hoping July, he'll actually get it done.
Okay, well, John has the full package of.
Well, I know that there is a tug of war going on in, in Boston regarding how to use federal funds. And the governor has his ideas, the legislature has there, so it's likely to delay enactment of, uh, the operating budget probably into, well, certainly into, uh, January, July. I've sent a text message to the chief, notified him that we're a little early at this point, but bring them over for the executive.
We have a resignation, uh, unfortunately from Gary Weiner from Stormwater, ready. He's resigning, uh, the main of the committee is resigning as chair. So. Don't break staying on, now you're staying on.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, stay on, stay on.
Um, I don't know, I wasn't, I wasn't going to bring this up this evening, but I will. I wasn't going to bring this up this evening, but I will, regards to the Hennepin County Retirement Board. There was a intro report filed, uh, by the PRA. Uh, the report left a lot of items, just partially resolved. Uh, and, uh, you might have seen the articles in the paper when Mr. Thoreau took, uh, very happy with the report. And my response to that was, I wouldn't be happy if I was running an agency that had a, had a state regulatory board come in and have to over, oversee it and straighten out the mess for six years. I would, and also have three investigations, three attorney general, the ethics commissioner, and the, uh, inspector general. Another issue with that is I sent a letter today to the Hennepin County Retirement Board requesting that they, uh, seek from their bonding agency, uh, file a claim to recover the two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars that was, uh, fraudulently obtained through fake invoices. And it was approved continuously by the board. Uh, the next step in that, of course, is that board members can be held, uh, for failing, failing to fulfill the fiduciary responsibility, can be held liable personally for the, for the losses. So we'll see how that happens. And lastly, the, one of the selectmen in Long Meadow, uh, attempted to get the, uh, a way to contact the board members. And the, their new board attorney said that they, they are not, their emails are not, uh, public, public record because they're not elected officials. Fact of the matter is two of them are elected officials. Uh, and there's no way to contact the board members directly, but he suggested sending it to the, the, uh, executive director and that she would screen the emails and send them on to the appropriate party. Which is, lacks a little transparency or accountability there, but.
I, I was disappointed, I read the report also. In fact, I, I had the same contact that you did probably from reporter for the Springfield paper. And, uh, I just thought it was very disappointing. I thought their response was lackluster. It doesn't give us any confidence that, uh, they're going to right the ship.
I do have to point out as well, one of the interesting things was that Mr. Thoreau, uh, made another reimbursement of three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars from the years prior to the audit and the year after the audit, apparently for rental of his own condominium in the cave. For total of five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
So it wasn't just a one-off?
Wasn't just a one-off.
Just getting back.
Yeah.
Rental to himself. That's an interesting concept.
That's the update on that. Uh, what do we have for, uh, conomister, selectmen reports?
Uh, was that the plan board meeting, Don was there as well, but representing Stormwater, I think, right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, solar.
Solar. Couldn't, couldn't tell a half on the back. But, uh, it does seem like progress is being made. I think all departments in town, the, uh, the applicant, the plan board, we're trying to work together to bring this across the finish line in accordance with town rules. And I'd like to thank everyone's cooperation, you know, all the people that stood. As Don has mentioned before, we're seeing, if anything, some positive attributes in terms of town revenue from these. I know people are not totally happy with the appearance of all these solar builds, but they do bring some benefit in terms of revenue to the town. And that will keep, with the pilots that the, the board is approving, that will keep allowing the town to manage its revenue stream going forward. And so there is, there is one benefit to that. Uh, again.
And I thought it was a good, healthy discussion.
Well, respectful, it was very civil. Exactly. Um, also the housing authority, again, they're concerned with ongoing maintenance. They will be coming back to CPA first for some money, for a study of facilities. And then there's been a change in how they're funding, either the state and federal. So that's something that's affecting their going forward as well. Don't think that it went to end at once. Uh, just quickly to the board, we do have, uh, we have been invited to the parade on Sunday. Unit one, position fifteen. Am I going to see either of you there?
Do you have a float?
It's on July fourth, the fourth of July.
We'll be there.
Okay, we meet at the high school about no later than quarter of ten.
It's going to be sunny, I have to wear a hat, you know?
It'll be, every year, I think it's blistering hot, isn't it?
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be decent, I think, high seventies.
Do we have a banner? Are we carrying a banner?
We used to have a banner, we used to have volunteers and then they just left.
Is it just us, is the band going?
After about half a mile, you start merging in with Richard Mills area, you know?
The Maha Clowns.
We get to drive those little, uh, scooters and go over the ramp.
They can get you one of those. They can get you one of those, chief.
I did not want to be dressed up as Ghostbusters going crazy.
Parks and Rec, Ethan report.
Well, I haven't met with them, but there's been some ongoing concerns down there.
We just made, they're going to take care of it.
Yeah. We have, Bob and I have been working on the social channels. Uh, we've rebranded the YouTube channel to the town of Hampton. Uh, it's got a banner on the top, it's got the crest on the logo. Uh, it's updated there and we're working on the Facebook page now for the town of Hampton.
So is that similar to what, uh, East Long Meadow has for their YouTube channel? In terms of they have their own branded channel of it?
Pretty much, yeah, that's what it is, yeah.
And then you can actually go click on different apartments depending on.
Yeah, so we set up playlists for committees or departments, so board, selectmen, planning board, whoever's got videos, they're all in their own playlist individually. So anybody can go on there and see what's been zoomed on, past meetings, that's the ones that use the zoom.
Trying to run over a paper review anytime now.
So I got some sponsorships on there.
We're getting, uh, some boards now, uh, recording their meetings and, and I'm posting, I'm posting, certainly Capitol Planning wants to be posted for every meeting that they have. Veterans has undertaken a couple of meetings that, uh, we have, we've posted for them. Um, planning, uh, although some discussion today as to whether or not the planning board will continue to use Zoom going forward, so.
Well, I appreciate that, uh, high school student.
It, yeah, uh, Joanne was very, very happy to have her show up and sit down and know exactly what she had to do. And I have offered it to everyone in the townhouse, but I haven't received any responses. But what an easy thing to have someone else take care of.
She was a quick study, I offered a trainer, she looked at me like I had two heads and offered to train me.
Administrator's report?
Hey, well, I mentioned already that our health agent is retiring on the thirtieth of July. Uh, we just talked about the recruitment of the students. Uh, oh, but the planning board is going to have one more session of that hearing. They've continued it again, so that was not concluded. So we'll have the high school students. And we're going to make an effort, uh, at the next department's meeting to, uh, interest other boards and committees to, uh, doing Zoom broadcasts of their meetings and recording them and posting them on the town website. So especially now that we have the students, there really isn't any good reason not to, uh, not to do that, so. Okay, you know, I've already talked about the um, twenty year vehicle replacement schedule. Plumbing inspector was provided with a disclosure form, which he signed, delivered to the clerks. Work at Academy Hall will go forward. Also, uh, hoping to restart the, uh, periodic review by the, and discussion by the board of selectmen with various boards and committees. So I would ask the park and rec to come in on July sixth, basically to give you an overview and the public, an overview of what they're doing and their programs, so. We started down this road, but then we're interrupted and, uh, certainly when we closed the town hall, it wasn't very convenient to do it, so. But I think it's a good idea that we, we had started out and, uh, it certainly will be informative to those who listen to these meetings. Going to bring Entree in, Craig and I, we talked about the fiber optic line in this building. We need to have Entree come in and, and, uh, give us some good information about where we stand.
I think we should have a charter communications coming too.
Yeah.
A charter, yes.
Is Cassidy still over?
Uh, yeah, she had left and she's back, but I would definitely get in touch with her and.
The town is paying three hundred and twenty dollars a month.
The other thing, and now that we're closing out our books, we'll make sure that touch base with Cliff on the final totals. You still have that updated list of intersections you'd like to, yeah, lights installed at?
I have that.
Okay, yes, I think, yeah, probably somewhere again. I think power developed it, okay, so make sure that's still up to date. Verify the, the capacity we have by doing the LED conversion and start getting them installed for this new year.
And lastly, uh, I was officially notified that the certification election for the Police Patrolman Union, uh, was completed. There were seven votes to switch to the New England Police Benevolent Association and two votes to stay with the IBPO. So, uh, the new union has been certified.
Are we checking those ballots?
Okay, checking those. I'm waiting till the company in Arizona finishes their work and we're going to bring it over.
Anything else?
I'd like to leave my report.
I guess that's it, we will, uh, so you would entertain a motion to leave regular session and enter an executive session for the purpose of strategy respective, collective bargaining or litigation because an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the town?
The police patrol.
Without return to open session?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
John Flynn, I.
Well, yeah, I'm for it.
Greg Rivas, that?
Thank you all.
Thank you.